Go ahead and get started with tonight's council meeting. We've got a lot, we've got a long agenda, and I heard that there was a football game or something going on later tonight, so we'll try to get through this quickly. If you'll all please rise for tonight's invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend A.B. Sawyer with First Baptist Church of Fairhope, and I can ask you to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is he here? I was looking for him, and I did not see him. The closest guy to the mic will give the invocation then. No. Councilman Boone, can I ask you to...
I will do it. Let us pray. My dear fellow, Lord, we thank you again for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings you've given this people in this city, Lord. Lead, guide, direct us, Lord, in all things we do, and make our decisions based on your decisions, Lord, and you with all of your glory. Bless us as we go along in this day and this night, and as I said, keep us going through this day in your precious and holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe Reverend Sawyer's an LSU or Clemson alumni, I'm not sure. We'll give him a pass tonight. Okay. Thank you for that, Councilman Boone. First order of business will be to approve the minutes from the 23rd of December 2019's regular city council meeting. Do you have any changes, additions, deletions to those minutes?
To make a motion, we approve as presented.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Motion carries. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President, and I don't have much of an update right now, but I will tell you, since the beginning of the new year, department heads and I have been spending quite a bit of time finalizing the State of the City, which will be a booklet that we'll hand out again for the State of the City. It's scheduled for February 6th. What day is that again? Thursday. Thursday, February 6th. And last year, there was a huge turnout. We were really proud of that, and I think it'll be even more so this time. So, please come out and enjoy meeting all the department heads. It's kind of like a mini town hall. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Okay. Next item is public participation pertaining to agenda items only at this point. If you would like to speak to items 6 through 27, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Item 5 is a public hearing of its own, so if you want to speak to item 5, if you'll please save your comments until we get to that portion of the agenda. So, items 6 through 27, you will be given three minutes.
Dan Stankowski, 205 White Avenue. Mayor and council members, you know that many things make Fairhope very unique. Our location on Mobile Bay, the relationship with the Fairhope Single Tax, our pier in our parks, and of course, our beautiful downtown. Tonight, you have an opportunity to preserve a portion of downtown by approving a resolution to purchase what has been called the Clock Corner. It's not the clock we're buying, but a gathering place in the heart of downtown. It seems like a lot of money to buy a small parcel of property, but keep this in mind: my house in the fruit and nut section would be worth a lot less if it were in another portion of the county. And conversely, if it were in New York City or in San Francisco, it would be more valuable. It's not the size of the parcel, it's the strategic location in the crossroads of downtown that sets its value. Thanks to the Fairhope Tax for partnering with the city to fund this purchase. I strongly recommend approval of the resolution to preserve this iconic location for today, tomorrow, and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stankowski.
Can I go watch the ballgame?
Absolutely. Will you text me the score?
Hey, Debbie Quinn, 7172 Taylor Street in North Fairhope. And I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number 26, about the purchase of the property at the corner of Fairhope and Section. Now, the Fairhope Single Tax has done great things for the city of Fairhope by setting aside the beachfront, a lot of other pieces of property. And so, I want to thank you for working with the Single Tax to try and purchase the last great piece of public space right in the middle of town. There are a lot of things that are invaluable, and this is one of them, and right in the middle of downtown. And so, there's very few pieces of public space that people can wander on, can come together on, that you can view parades on, that you can come together as a tour group and gather on, and then go to your bus, or as a school group and gather on. And so, this is one of those pieces. And so, I want to thank the mayor and the council for working with the Single Tax, and I hope y'all will vote for that tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Quinn.
Mayor and council, good evening. My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope, and I wanted to address Agenda Item 26, the purchase order, the purchase of the Clock Corner. The city is proposing to pay $525 to an investor owner for a property, which is 26 by 60 feet, located in Fairhope Avenue and Section Street. The property value suggested by that purchase price is about $15 million per acre. This sounds to me, on the surface of it, like a very good deal for the owner investor from whom it'll be purchased. It's not, on the surface, entirely clear that this is a good deal for the taxpayer. The resolution states that there is great historical significance at this particular piece of property. The main feature is the clock. The clock was the result of the passing of Lawrence Tuck in 1989. The clock has been there for about three decades. It's technically not historical itself, but there is perhaps something very historical about the space that's occupied. The only other feature there is a sidewalk. It seems to me that the resolution should be capable of stating just what the history is to be memorialized at that location. It would be memorialized perhaps through some symbol or some plaque of historic significance. I think we need to state just what it is that we're going to memorialize with this space. I think the action therefore deserves a little more work to justify the investment as well. Some kind of return on investment, some kind of payback analysis. Seems a little technical, but at this price, I think it deserves a justification. So, I'd recommend that we clarify the nature of the city's ownership of this space when the deal is done. I think it might technically be Fairhope Single Tax property. I don't know if we're purchasing not the ground, but some long-term lease or something. I think that should be clarified and stated. I'd recommend, I'd ask you to please consider tabling this for further development at a future time for consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gover.
Diane Thomas, 233-89 Main Street in the Montrose Fairhope section. And I also want to address Resolution 26. Mayor, council, and citizens, and Mr. Glover, I'm glad I follow you because I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of that corner. First, I want to say that Fairhope is a community that has always valued its history, and my evidence for that is the number of property owners in downtown Fairhope who have preserved their buildings, which were built in the early 1900s, the 20s, and the 30s. Facades have been altered somewhat, and businesses have come and gone, but you can walk around downtown Fairhope, and you can recognize any number of buildings that have been there for close to 100 years. And my favorite example is Fairhope Pharmacy, which was first a wooden building in 1900, and then the present building got built somewhere between 1902 and 1908, and it looks today like it did when it was first built. It is the oldest continuously operating pharmacy in the same location in the whole state of Alabama. I want to touch just a little bit now on the history of the corner. The earliest development of what was to become the town of Fairhope actually started at the intersection of Section and Fairhope Avenue. And the corner, which is under consideration tonight, was first part of Gaston Livery, and then when autos began to become more popular than horses, it was Gaston Auto Livery. And then finally, in 1924, when cars were here to stay, it became Gaston Ford Motor Company. The part, the landscaped courtyard that we're looking at, was actually a pull-up spot with two gas pumps. But after hours and on special occasions, it served as probably the only large gathering space in downtown Fairhope. And it has been a gathering space, nothing has ever permanently been built there, it has been a gathering space for over 100 years. It was just touched on that in 2007, a previous council purchased the north part of the courtyard. I'm here tonight asking you to finish the purchase of the courtyard with obtaining the southern part. It's already been said, but I want to repeat it one more time. It has served as the gathering spot at the historic heart of Fairhope for over 100 years, and your vote tonight can preserve that spot for the next 100 years. I happen to know, after talking with Single Tax Board of Directors, that if the city partners with Single Tax, Single Tax will deed this property to the city, and it will be put in a special trust so that nothing can ever be built there, and it will be kept for the enjoyment of the citizens of Fairhope forever. And the only other thing that I want to say is the city would not be paying $525,000 because Single Tax is coming up with half the purchase price. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
My name is Savan Wilson, 120 Oak Bend Court, Fairhope. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for all of your service to our city, and I know it's sometimes very difficult. In November, the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation unanimously voted to pay half of the asking price with the opportunity for the city council to pay the remaining half. I'm a Single Taxer, and I really appreciate them making that statement because of this purchase, because they do own the dirt that's under that property, but they don't, the lease is what they're basically buying back. And Diane was correct. We understand that they will be giving it to the city as a deeded property, much as they have all the beautiful parklands that we already have. Our communication with Matt Bowers had been extremely positive, and he has remained open to selling the property for public use. And I think that's an amazing accomplishment right there. As a space for citizens to view different events, or a space to relax while shopping or meeting people, this historic corner is priceless as a public space in the center of Fairhope. I know there are many good ideas for the final look of this property, and please buy the property tonight with a plan to develop it for our residents and visitors. I'm sure citizens would contribute to the enhancement of this public plaza once it's purchased. We firmly believe that preserving this historic center of Fairhope is in the best interest of Fairhope's citizens. Once it is built on, this public space can never be regained. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Francis Rip, 22985 High Ridge Road, Rip Report and backstory podcast. Number 6 and 26. On 6, an ordinance to declare that certain real property, 105 farmable acres of the city of Fairhope, is temporarily designated surplus and not needed for public or municipal purposes. That's after, that's less than one month from you buying it at 1.65, and I understand you're going to lease it now for $9,000 a year. Any of those that go all the way back to the soccer field, they did the same bloody thing, and they sat on it for five or six years until subdivision built, all the way right up to it. I don't know who negotiated this deal, but I think the city should have been allowed to participate a little bit more in it. On 26, I agree the corner is iconic. I think the clock ought to be there, but the part of it that I see is how the council dealt with the owner in the beginning. If you'd been smart and you had a good negotiator in the beginning, you'd have got the property for less. You wouldn't have had him come up here and accuse you in council chambers of blackmail and come within an inch of your life of being sued over the deal. Now, you're backed in a corner. Now, the first sentence of that is that the city authorizes Karen Wilson or Council President Jack Burrell on behalf of the city to coordinate with Single Tax and negotiate this. Well, when I look back at that land that you just did for recreation, I hope you choose the mayor instead of Jack to look into this. And I hope the citizens are paying attention, because what's coming down the pike next is going to be the triangle. I'm going to be real interested to see how you put together that little deal.
Counsel, just for the record, we put the mayor or me, the negotiation's already been done. I think the council had authorized the mayor to negotiate. I don't think that the owner budged on the price. I haven't been involved with that at all. It's just a matter of having either one of us, you know, once the paperwork is done, sign it. It's just something to cover both ends should either one of us need to do it. There's nothing more, nothing less. As far as the property goes, it's very common, if you have property that's not being used, you certainly want to, this is back to item 6, if you're not going to use it all, rather than let it sit idle, you want to try to get what you can for that, and I stand behind that negotiation. I think that the treasurer has been kept up to speed as to those negotiations, and I think if you would ask her, she would say that I did a pretty darn good job in that and got a pretty darn good deal for the city. And I think the person that wound up leasing that would tell you that I beat them up pretty good, and feels like that the city got a pretty good deal out of that as well. So, I'll take full credit for that, even if it comes with criticism from those less informed. All right. Public comments still open? Okay. If there's no one else, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Robinson?
I will have some comments on particularly item number 26, but I will save them until that time.
Okay. Thank you. No comment here. Councilman Brown?
No comment.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Okay. And I have no council comments tonight. We'll move on to item 5, which is a public hearing of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, the request to rezone the property of the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation and Pauline Jane Lloyd from Residential Agriculture to Plan Unit Development. The property is generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Bay Meadows Avenue and State Highway 181, as known as a live oaks pud. It's a parcel containing 37.961 acres more or less. And if I could ask planning to, if they would, you know, hit the high points and hit the changes since the last time this was introduced, and I am going to ask someone to introduce this in just a moment, but if I can ask you to hit the high points and explain to council what the differences would be. This was put up for a public hearing. We had a public hearing, and there were some changes made and re-advertised, and now we will have another public hearing. So, I will ask someone to introduce the ordinance now.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, some of the high notes, we already went over where the property's located on the screen. You can see it's at the northeast corner of Bay Meadows and 181. One of the biggest issues was the density and the size of the lots. It was asked that the density be lowered, the green space be kept the same, and the lots be more conditioned to be the R2-sized lots. On the screen is a snip from the actual site plan itself, showing that the minimum area meets the requirements of 10,500 square feet and a minimum lot width of 80 feet, and that is the, meets the minimum requirements of an R2 zoning. On the screen is the site plan. It's been reduced from the previous site plan of 99 lots down to 76 lots, giving it a density of 2.25 units per acre. The green space remained the same at 22.8%. Again, these are some of the slides that we have seen, comments. And then, question was, why such a high density? They're requesting 2.25, which is lower than R2, and actually lower than an R1 density. These are the comments I just briefly mentioned there, that it's been revised to lower the density, keep the green space the same. The commercial parcel, it was discussed, and it remains as B4 professional and business and professional district uses. Resulting effects are larger lots that meet and slightly exceed the R2 minimum lot size, and the total number of lots have been reduced to 76. The original plan proposed to the planning commission was 107 lots. It was revised, presented again as 99 lots, a few more revisions made, brought to the council. They took your comments, came back to you with the 76 lots. And again, there's the site plan up on the screen for you to look at, and staff is happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Any comments? Is there anyone here on behalf of the requister that would like to speak?
This is Joe Rector, and I believe that some of the Lloyd family is here on behalf of the client.
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Rector with Mullins LLC, and as Mike mentioned, we've been here before. And at our last meeting, just a few things I want to just touch on to kind of, to make sure we reemphasize here. One of the requests that was made was that we take a look at this and come back with a modified density that was fit in a kind of a slot that we were given, that was, I think the number was like 1.9 to 2.4. And so, the number we've ended up with here is in that slot. We went back and reworked that with the lots that were a minimum of 10,500 square feet. So, now, all those lots do meet that criteria, and we worked this to where we maintained the same open space that this had whenever it had the variation of the smaller lots as well that got the number up. Originally, at one time, we were as high as 110, and we made some modifications and some concessions here on some of the buffer areas around the perimeter of this, which actually reduced us down to 99. And then, whenever we made this last meeting where we had the request to look at doing this with the larger lots, it got us down to the 76 that we're at at this time. That also took into adding the connectivity that was requested at the planning and zoning, was voted on at that and unanimously approved at that time as well, and we've maintained that. It's also the other items that had been requested throughout this process, having been August the 5th, I think, was whenever we went from the final meeting at the planning and zoning, where we had eliminated the second access point out to Bay Meadow and made the revisions to where we gave a nice buffer around the entire perimeter, 30 feet, 50 feet on the north to get it back out to where we're protecting all the trees that are along that north line there. If you have any specific questions for me, I would be available to answer those, and some of the members of the family are here with me, they'd like to say a few things as well, and then I'll come back up in a minute.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Questions? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. My name is Larry Lilly. I'm a resident here in Fairhope. I live at 108 Crofton Court. I'm the great nephew of Pauline Lloyd, whose property we are discussing, and I'm the executor of her estate. I'm joined by the lion's share of my first cousins here this evening, and so collectively, I've got some notes that I'd like to just bring to the council's attention. Wanted to point out that it's my understanding that in some of these meetings, there's been some resistance about how my great aunt would have never wanted this land to be developed. I actually have brought with me tonight some of the plans that she had drawn up back in the 90s. Following our great aunt's passing, we had multiple unsolicited offers on this property, and our great aunt never had children. She married late, she never had children, but she loved children, and her dream was always to have this parcel of land developed for young, growing families at a price point where that demographic could afford, with substantial green spaces and meeting places for families where kids could play. That was her vision, and that was her long-term goal with this property. Having received multiple unsolicited offers, the family discussed them, and we chose the team that's here tonight based on their plans for this property most closely aligning to the goals and the objectives and the dreams that our great aunt had for this property. They actually have more common areas and significantly lower density than the original plans that our great aunt had prepared. And I'll show these. The original subdivision was going to be named the Meadows. It had two entrances. And I'm happy to let you guys have these to review further, and I've got some other copies, if you will, of the original subdivision layout. But there were entrances, obviously, at the time it was 27 and not 181, so there was an entrance off of 27 and an entrance off of Bay Meadows. It shows the subdivision layout, the central meeting area, if you will, that had a fountain. It also had a meeting area down in this area as well for the residents. So, the notion that she never wanted this developed, this is dated 1995, so it's just in error, and I wanted to make that point. I guess I'll just say that I have a request of the council. We are trying to fulfill the wishes of our great aunt. I request that you guys approve the plan. The team that's here tonight, the developer, has met all of the requirements, has worked with not only this council, but also the planning committee, and made concessions on all fronts. So, I ask the council to approve and help us achieve our great aunt's dream. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with the family, with the developer, that wants to speak? I'll ask members of the public now if they'd like to come to the podium and speak.
Elliot Sylvester, 9849 Bay Meadows. Mayor, council members, thank you so much. I've been coming to all the meetings for the development of this. When we bought our house a year and a half ago, we knew full well that that land was eventually going to be developed. I was excited at what it was zoned already. I was excited at what it was zoned already because I thought, oh, that's going to be big lots, big beautiful homes, and I never honestly expected the driveway to all this to be across the street from us. We have six kids that live at home. I have four grandchildren that come over at least twice a week. And so if you're seeing kids play in the area, actually, there is one house a little bit down from us that now you see the kids on the street, but it's pretty much a high chance that it's my kids. I think that's my, my greatest concern. We knew it was going to be developed. We knew that the deer were going away eventually, one day. But my concern is that I just feel like we keep rezoning everything smaller and smaller and smaller, and sooner or later, we're going to lose the, one of the characters of Fairhope. This is Mayberry, and, and I just fear that we, we need to put the brakes on in, in some of these. I, I get it, it's a big parcel. It may have been the great aunt's dream to develop it. I don't think that we necessarily have to say yes to every single developer that wants to, to put a bunch of, of homes in there. And it, this is selfishness, because I love my quiet street. I do. I, I love, in fact, I love that it's dark, I love that it's quiet, I love that there's not a lot of traffic. That's the reason why we moved there. I'm on one acre, and to me, it's a nice yard. It's a nice yard. So I don't know if there's a way around it, because I know that the DOT, the last time it was explained, because Firethorn's across there, and they, they want to put a light there because they've got a light at Twin Beach, and although I don't understand why we've got a blinking light where the golf course is, I'm not exactly sure why that's the case. But that's my biggest concern, is I don't know what it's going to do to affect our property value. I know it's going to be developed, I just, I, I just don't know what it, what it's going to do to affect the area. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mark Rochetko. I'm an adjacent property owner to the west at 9727 Derby Lane. I've been out there over 30 years. I'm willing to concede that there's been some movement on the part of the developer by this, but they still have not addressed specific comments that the council made. They have not defined what's going in the commercial part of the property. They have not provided any architectural plans that I've seen. The density that the city analysis put together is 2.01. They're, still requesting 2.25, which is higher. Two more items, the trees along the fence line or the city, it's not in the plans to be protected. They're, they're saying that, but it, there's nothing written, written anywhere about that. The plan also says that Fairhope utilities are available out there. Right now, we're all under Riviera Utilities. So unless somebody knows something more than I know, it's Riviera Utilities out there. And the last thing is, this is in an estate. We understand that, but we're concerned with if it's passed in its present form, whether it would be developed or whether it would be sold, and then if somebody else would do something else with it. So that's, I can't endorse the plan with this many discrepancies in it at this point in time, but I'd be more than willing to sit down with the developer and, and discuss these issues. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Julie Comer. I'm at 9551 Bay Meadows. I think my biggest concern, I've been to several of the meetings of planning and zoning, is the density still doesn't meet the surrounding area. The smallest lots down on Bay Meadows is a half an acre. You have new developments like Nature's Gate and Sedgfield who have much larger lots, lot sizes than what is being proposed. So as Fairhope continues to grow, I am asking that the coun, the council is vigilant in keeping with, up with the look that is currently there, that has been there for years. And the commercial part of this just, it just aches my heart that it is being put into a neighborhood, an existing neighborhood. The traffic, as you guys have heard, has already been, is already high volume through that street. We have street bumps that we put in three years ago on that side. I have emailed all of you guys my concern. I hope that you get a chance to read it if you haven't already. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Comer.
Ms. Mayor, council members, thank you for the time. My name is Mario Gabriel. I live in 465 Fortune Drive in the Firethorn subdivision, which is directly across Highway 181 from this proposed development. I spoke to you before. I appreciated the last meeting, the apparent support that some of you expressed concerning the density, which appears to be, I believe, the, the main concern here. 76 homes equates to about 152 cars at 1.88 vehicles per family, per household. Traffic here already is getting to be terrible. We don't have the structure yet to support, nor the services to support continued development like this. We're talking about volunteer fire department downtown Fairhope, and I thought all along that we had a paid staff, firefighters. Maybe I have wrong information, but I, I don't think so. Police department, we have increasing numbers of crimes being committed. And I, I just, notwithstanding the family's concerns, what the owner of the property thought in 1995 has to be completely different, or somewhat different, from what 24 years later brings us to Fairhope. I don't, not questioning and not doubting that this lady, in her fine purpose, wanted something like this for the, for the children to grow in a safe area. The gentleman expresses concerns with his children and grandchildren playing in a safe area. And of course, some others talk about the value of the property surrounding the, the proposed development. So I'll ask each and one of you, when you vote, yes, taking consideration your individual concerns, desires, and likes, but when you do the vote, you must also consider every person out here who's come and spoke with you, emailed you, or called you to express other concerns. Okay? Your good judgment, your common sense has to be collectively put together so we can all benefit from this. 76 homes, to me, it's still too many. Okay? Considering especially that we have other subdivisions that are being developed, proposed, or planned not far from this area. So I please ask that you take in consideration all those statements that people have made to you, because this is the future of her, Fairhope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. Any others?
Question?
Question.
Are you going to address some of those concerns?
Yes, I just want to take a moment if I can to address some of those concerns and to correct a, a couple of things that were said, because we really can't just let them float out there and be the final thing that's said. The comment the gentleman made about not seeing any architectural plans or anything like that is an absolute normal part of this process. No one produces architectural plans when they're in for a rezoning, because you don't even know what you're going to have in the final product until you get ready to get your engineering plans done. No one's going to get their engineering plans done until they get through the rezoning process. So that's where we're at. So that's why there's been no architectural plans.
So let me just summarize that by saying, yeah, there is a site plan review and approval process.
Yes. And that commercial site, that's been designated on there all along, that that is a standalone site plan that has to be reviewed at that time with, and meet all those regulations that would pertain to the site plan review for commercials. The gentleman that just spoke about Firethorn, one of the things I would point out is that Firethorn, he, he lives there, and he wouldn't live there had the developers we work with not done that development. I mean, it would be a big open field, and it was a big open field whenever Pauline Moid lived in this parcel, and that Firethorn was being permitted. And, you know, they understood that that was going to be a development, and they weren't trying to block Firethorn from being developed. And so it's, it's just, it's kind of that first guy in, now they're there, and now they want to prevent the people who were there well before. So she had a plan, like they said, that was back 24 years ago and everything, that, that didn't get implemented. It actually had 129 lots, and we're now here down to this, down to the number we're at that's in the, is that the right? That's, oh, sorry, yeah. With 76 lots, I mean, that is, was it 60, 50, 59 lots less than what the first plan? So we've come down 40%, you know, from where it was before. I mean, it's, we're at 60% of what the original plan was. So it's a considerable amount less than what the first plan was than what the plans we've brought in each time. This thing was originally submitted to you as a carbon copy of the PUD that was just permitted directly south of us, adjacent property line. The Twin Beach PUD was brought before this board and the council, and it was approved at 3.18 units per acre. It had 52-foot wide lots as the minimum lot size. And so when we went through with staff and got everything we were doing on this project, which the, the one lady mentioned the, the issue with having commercial in a neighborhood residential area, well, one of the things that was discussed at the very beginning of this project was that 181 is not a residential street. It's a commercial thoroughfare, and that the city's long-term plans, the comp plan, all the workshops that have been done was that that corridor be built up in a more commercial-type development. So we tried to meet what your comp plan and what the, your long-range plans were by putting a commercial component out on the Highway 181 to meet that plan for having that as a corridor and keeping the residential inside the property separate from the access out on 181. And then, as they mentioned, yes, DOT doesn't want any additional cuts because they feel like with Bay Meadows and Twin Beach, that's enough in that segment with the speed on that highway. And about the, you know, this, the issue with the density, you know, if you, you know, we're, we're providing with you, when you count the open space, the ponds and all that stuff, it's 27% of this is open space. None of the PUDs that you guys just approved meet this criteria. You have one that's just north of us that's got, I think, maybe 50-foot wide lots on it, and the one south of us has got 52-foot wide lots on it, and none of them have the amount of green space or open space on it, which we have here. I mean, they're, this, this development exceeds every criteria that's put out there. Every one of them. And, you know, it's, it gets to the point to where it's like, we, we give everything here to, to try to satisfy all the different people that are stakeholders in the community and still have a viable development that, that makes sense. And that's what we feel like we've got here. I mean, it's down to 76, it's a considerable number down from our original submittal. It doesn't come close to the si, the density that the one is that's directly south of us that was just approved, nor the one that was just last, I think it was last month, that was approved up to the north, that was the, that was up by the, across from the Walmart. So I just want to point out those things and remind how we kind of got here, because this isn't something that just kind of happened overnight. We started this process in March of this past year, and it's almost been one full year of going through these meetings and making these, these tweaks and everything. So we'd really like you to consider that those, those items and, and kind of think about the things that, that we've all tried to do here to, to make everybody happy whenever you consider the vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get some clarification from staff? Hunter, obviously, the planning commission did recommend approval, and that was with 99 lots, is that correct? Okay. And with conditions. And also, I didn't see it, I was flipping, there's a lot, there's a lot of pages in here to this comment about the comprehensive plan. Does this fit into the city's comprehensive plan?
There is villages in the comprehensive plan and commercial notes. This area does not fit within there, but it's also not contemplating quite so importantly the areas where there's so many unzoned. So I, I do think it's incorrect to think that we have, unlike Greeno, where we're moving more toward a corridor planning, that has not been in, specified within the, the comprehensive plan. It was more.
It's just not specified.
Nodes and, yes, that is correct. And I do want, this has no impact on, on this project, but I think, especially with, I think, the, some of the zoning amendments that we'll have with PUDs, it is entirely possible to come up with plans at this stage. It's a commitment, and if you don't, if it doesn't work out, you can amend the PUD, or you can subdivide commercial lots outside of a PUD and, and ask for that straight zoning. So I don't want that to impact your, your vote, but to, to think a PUD should not have elevations or what building looks like, or more importantly, how it integrates with the adjacent neighborhoods like this when there's multiple components, that is entirely the purpose of a planning unit development. So just, we're going to see more of these, and we want you to make, make sure you know that.
Can I ask one, one question? I'm sorry.
Now, public hearings closed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. Really quick.
I know, Hunter wasn't here when we made our regional application, but our regional application did have elevations and a site plan, and we were actually asked during the process to not be specific on the actual use, and that's all we've removed.
Okay. Counsel, comments? Questions? Clarifications? You know, I, I will have to say that I agree with the gentleman that said we, they did come to the council, and the council did, I think it was pulled, but we did give them a ballpark figure on a density, which I believe that they, they have met. I'm not, that's not a, I'm not trying to say how you should vote, but I, I am just stating the obvious that that, that was done. It was a 23% reduction in lots from the last time this was brought before this body. And so the other remaining question, as I recall the last conversation, was, did have to do with the commercial out parcel, which another neighbor had brought up, the question about the commercial. And I would say right now, does anybody have any concerns about that? That would be R4, so it would allow permitted uses within R4. Once again, you're not, you're not going to see site plans until, and you don't know what it would be within R4.
B4.
I'm saying R4, B4. Thank you. B4. So whatever would be proposed there, as long as they met all the other building regulations and, and planning and zoning regulations, they could put a, a permitted use under B4. So I want to make sure that that's clear to everyone. But at this stage, that's not defined. If anybody has any concerns about that, I think that that should be voiced now rather than, than down the road. I don't hear any more questions or concerns. I'm assuming we will let this lay over for final consideration at the next council meeting? Okay. Thank you, counsel. We will move on, and thank you to everybody that presented. Item number six is an ordinance to declare that certain real property, it's 105 farmable acres of the city of Fairhope, is temporarily designated as surplus and not needed for public or municipal purposes. In response to an offer to lease the property yearly from January 1 through December 31 for one year, with front, four one-year options in, in your package, you see the, the lease amount. Also see such items as the city could give the lease or a 180-day notice should they need to pull some land out of that lease to be developed for the public use. Can I get somebody to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments about this? Questions about this? If not...
Well, you know...
Well, my question, you talked about the amount per acre as far as the rent is concerned. Is that something that we can talk about?
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of public record.
It's just, I think it'd be helpful to people, for people to know sort of the comparison and what we got and...
Well, I'll give you the one comparison that Kim had researched, it's in public record in the county, and that the county was leasing some land, some farmable land. Well, let me also tell you that the experts that I've talked to said the range is 50 to $150 per acre per year. The 150 is really reserved for irrigated land with big irrigation systems and it's almost unheard of outside of that to pay that much. The land that Kim researched in central Baldwin County was being leased at a rate of $50 per acre. We negotiated a price of $100 per acre, or double the rate that the county's getting. We reduced that by $5. We have a provision in there for them to maintain the land that's really that pecan orchard around the house, so that we don't have to have Public Works go down there and mow that, and they will maintain that a minimum of six times per year. To get something like that bush hog would probably cost you only order of $500. So the, the land that's around that would be, would only generate, it's probably maybe four or five acres, it would generate then about $500 worth of revenue at $100 an acre. So one mowing would, if they gave you one free mowing, it would take care of that, but we're going to get six mowings out of that. Like I said, we don't have to use city resources to maintain the park that's not being farmed. Now, if we have a storm, that would be incumbent upon the city to clean that up. They're not going to clean up if a hurricane comes through there and wipes out all those pecan trees. So just to give you an idea of what, what we're receiving and what the going rates are. Kim, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, when you came to ask me, I, of course, I knew what Kelly had done in the past. I pulled up, showed him the contract where if Kelly leases land, farmland, for $50 a acre. So he had a basis to go back and that was the point that he made in the negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions about that? Okay. And believe me, I always say this, counsel as well, we've been looking at a lot of our cell tower leases and things like this that were done 25 and 30 years ago, and they may have been good deals for the city 25 or 30 years ago, but the present value of that, I think that we're really getting the short end of the stick on that. But we can't do anything about a lot of those negotiations that were taking place, you know, 30 years ago. And I'm very, very sensitive to the value of what things are and doing a tremendous amount of research to make sure that we, you know, get, you know, what's due the city. And I take a lot of pride in trying to, trying to do that and, and I don't play favorites with any of these people that we're talking to and trying to get the utmost for the, for the city, whether we're purchasing something or whether we're leasing something, trying to get, trying to get the best possible deal that we can and bring it all back and talk to others that have gone through the same. So I just want to make that comment. With that, we'll let this ordinance lay over until the next council meeting for final adoption. Item number seven is an ordinance to declare certain real property, the 451 Pecan Avenue property of the City of Fairhope is not needed for public or municipal purposes in response to an offer to lease the property from January 20th, 2020 to March 20th, 2020. I don't know, Jessica, if you want to come to the podium and talk about this. Can I get somebody to introduce this ordinance, please?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. I will say, as she's making her way up, she has talked to Public Works and I believe the Fairhope Police Department and made certain that any amount of this Pecan Avenue property that is leased is not needed for public use at this moment in time.
That's correct. And so when we previously had filming here last spring, we rented a portion of this building as well for purposes that are similar to this. As Brandon told us in the work session, that'd be for set, storage, things along those lines. This particular lease that Marcus has drawn up for us includes compensation for all three months that are in the lease. Last time we did a flat fee, this kind of gives us a little bit more protection and a little more compensation for the building that they're using. Also, the lease includes a specific line about a security deposit that would not be returned if the, the building is not left in the state in which it was, in which it was occupied. And currently, that state is completely clean thanks to Public Works and their really hard work to get it nice and clean in there. So can I answer any questions for you?
And Jessica, as you may have said, and I was trying to read a lot of this as you were talking, but I believe that you're getting the amount of money per month that was received for the entire rental period the last time that this was done.
That's exactly right. So, so we, you know, we're getting a more fair compensation for what they are, they're asking for.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for Jessica?
I'd make a motion, we move for immediate consideration because the lease date starts in a week.
Okay, I have a motion for immediate consideration. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay, I have a second. All right. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, if you'll call that question.
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay. Having passed the motion for immediate consideration, I'll ask for final adoption. Somebody entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Or motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call the question.
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walker, for that. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and granting to MediaCom Southeast LLC the right to use the rights away of the City of Fairhope to provide cable services to the citizens of the city under the terms of a cable television system franchise agreement. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Creach, I just, you may want to chime in, but I would just say that our treasurer has looked through this agreement. Our new consultant, our franchising consultant on these matters has looked through this agreement, and I've just been privy to many conversations, and I believe that you're comfortable with this agreement and the consultant is comfortable with this agreement?
Yes, and the only change was the, have a start date on January 1 versus it had a start date at the end, end of the month.
January 28.
Yeah, January 28. So that was the only change that MediaCom asked for, and everything else, when I look through that agreement, you know, which is the same as last, the last term, is good.
Okay, and what's the term of it again?
It's five years.
Okay, all right. And now, some of these, I don't know, some of these we like ask escalators, and some of these by law you can ask for escalators, so sometimes you get the maximum amount that you're allowed by law.
That's right. Yeah, and FCC is the one that's, you know, sets all those, all those laws. And the one thing that with the FCC change, the city has been getting, at our, our city buildings have been getting free cable, and that will change now, so they will be sending us a bill. So we will probably need to look at location by location to find out if we want to have cable TV if it's necessary at some locations. So that will be the one change, but that was not a MediaCom to change, that was something that the FCC changed.
Mayor, there goes those soap operas. Good to cut you off there. All right. Any questions? Counsel. Do we need to do this immediately? Does somebody want to entertain? We're going to do it regardless, I believe. Does somebody want to entertain a motion for immediate consideration for this item?
Sure, I'll make a motion for immediate consideration.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for immediate consideration. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call a question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clerk, will you call that question?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number nine is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1567, known as the Fairhope Film Ordinance. We discussed this at length in the work session. Would somebody like to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. Jessica went over the particulars of this. I don't know that it, that it hurts or helps to pass this tonight. I think we could do it either way. I don't know of anything. What it would do is kind of clean up some of the, you know, it would allow those news reporters that might be, you know, filming something or somebody that's not filming something for commercial purposes to be able to conduct their business without being in violation of the ordinance. So unless, you know, unless, you really are in a hurry, we could, we could lay it over, but at the same time, I could see where we could go ahead and clean this up tonight as well. So we can let it lay over, or if somebody wants to make a motion for immediate consideration on this ordinance as well, we can do that. Okay, hearing no motion for immediate consideration, this will lay over until the next council meeting. Item number 10 is a resolution that certain items are declared surplus and the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of the personal property owned by the City of Fairhope by one of the following methods. One, to receive bids for such property via gov deals sold to the highest bidder, provided the city council shall have the authority to reject all bids when its opinion it deems the bids to be less than adequate consideration for the personal property. Or two, sold for scrap or recycled at the highest offered value. And three, disposal via a landfill. Counsel, you can see the list of items declared as surplus, also the recommendations as to whether to put on gov deals, scrap, or send them to the landfill. If you have any questions, we can direct them to Mr. Johnson. If you don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion to declare these items surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Declare them surplus and have them directed to dispose of the property. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 11 is a resolution, city council approves a selection of live engineering company to perform professional design and CEI engineering services for Oak Street at Section Street, drainage improvements at Big Mouth Gully for the Public Works Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with this firm. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson concerning this? Okay, if you want to know this, it's just right up the street here from where we sit right now. I believe you probably should be familiar with this. Okay, hearing no questions for Mr. Johnson, I will entertain a motion to approve this selection.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Okay, motion carries. Item number 12 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with GeoCon Engineering Materials Testing for professional engineering and construction material testing for the new electrical substation at Nichols Avenue and Young Street with a cost not to exceed of $5,000. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Allison? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the expense.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 13 is a resolution that Mayor Wilson is authorized to execute amendment number two to the contract for on-call professional services for the electric department with Stewart Engineering, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the associated contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $8,000. And Mr. Allison, I'm sorry to delay this meeting, but I do have a question as to why we have an add-on cost to those engineering services.
Basically, when we budgeted for it, we looked at what we've been spending with them, and then a couple of times we've had to come before you and ask for an extension and then looking, moving forward with some of the things we want to do to the distribution system that's going to require some power engineering design. And so we wanted to get this in place and ready to go to be able to use it for on-call with Stewart Engineering.
Okay, so it's a little bit of a slush where you need to comment about.
Correct. We're not necessarily explaining it's up to 8,000. If we need them, we'll need them. If not.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution, City of Fairhope procures a 2020 Chevy Tahoe SSV four-wheel-drive for the electric department. The vehicle needed is on the Alabama State bid list and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost would be $34,722.57. I believe this item is...
Sorry, didn't hear the question, sir.
It is budgeted, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Item 15 is a resolution, City of Fairhope votes to procure a ZD 326H-72 Kubota zero-turn mower for the rec department. For the Malling Road Soccer Complex, the type of equipment needed is on the Alabama State Department bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $13,429.21. I will entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll just say, down to item 21, we're all budgeted items. So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 16 is a resolution, City of Fairhope votes to procure a Peterson Lightning Loader Knuckle Boom Truck for the Public Works Department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell Purchasing Corporation and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $159,964. May I entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution, City of Fairhope votes to procure a Toter 96-gallon EVR, two garbage cans and lids for the fiscal year 2020 for the Public Works Department. The items are available for direct procurement through the Omni Partners contract, therefore they do not have to be let out for bid with a total cost for the three orders of $40,082.67. May I entertain a motion for that purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution, there's a slight change when I read this to you. The City of Fairhope votes to procure a 2019 Caterpillar, that should be 302.7D CR Canopy Mini Excavator with a tilt trailer for the gas department. The item is available for direct procurement through Omni Partners contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid with a total cost of $47,447. It is budgeted. I will entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for the purchase. I'm sorry, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 19 is a resolution, city of Fairhope vote to procure 15 Tasers, including the following accessories for each Taser, a holster, a battery pack, and a four-year warranty for the police department from Gulf State Distributors as a sole source distributor and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. Total cost will be $22,578. Entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 20 is a resolution, city of Fairhope vote to purchase two 75-kilovolt amp pad mount transformers for the electric department from Gresko Utility Supply and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be $11,250. And for the sake of those in the audience, when we say that without formal bid, these have already been formally bid and are on this state, these bid lists allow us to do that. So they have been competitively bid in the past. Council, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to purchase these pad mount transformers.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution, city of Fairhope approved the procurement of a jail management system for the Fairhope Municipal Jail, which is an add-on and only the software that will be compatible with the two modules the police department already has in use and therefore not submitted for bid. This is pursuant to the Code of Alabama. The total cost will be $25,120. I will entertain a motion for this procurement.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 22 is a resolution that the streets in St. Joseph's Way, as identified per plat recorded December 12th, 2007, at slide, and you can read those numbers, there's two slides in the instrument number 1089999 are hereby accepted for maintenance by the city of Fairhope. Mr. Johnson? I don't know. I don't want to take too much time, but recorded in 2007, we're just accepting them. Is there a?
And I'm going to kind of give you a 30-second history. This is a little unusual. This is in the city of Fairhope. It is six lots. It's at the end of New Era Road on the north side. New Era is a county road. For whatever reason, there was no request or considerations to accept this basically gravel turnaround that serves these six houses. We have had quite a few requests from the citizens that live there, Fairhope citizens, about some issues with just re-graveling and maintaining the grading of that turnaround. And we have explained to them after doing research, hey, that that road has never been accepted, even though, even though you're in the city, we can't do work on it because of that lack. And finally, after about the third meeting with the third citizen out there, I said the one thing I would do, at least we, there is a way to correct this problem and allow public works to maintain your gravel road in the, in that right of way, and that is to put it for you for consideration. It's a tiny road. We already maintain several gravel roads through the city. It would not be an owner's burden, and they are citizens of the city of Fairhope. So it is my recommendation you consider it. It's not going to be a big expense on an annual basis, and it's really difficult to go back every time and say, I can't help them. And so that is my recommendation, and that's the backstory.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Council, I will entertain a motion to accept the, those streets for maintenance by the city of Fairhope.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you. Item 23 is a resolution, city council hereby approves a $100 increase in all classifications of annual passes at the Quail Creek Golf Course. In that beginning with fiscal year 2021, the director of golf operations may increase the annual pass fees every three years according to his or her best judgment, and such increases shall not exceed 8%. The council shall be advised before such increases are to be implemented. Mr. Marks, I know you weren't here during the work session, if you wanted to make a few comments on that.
Yes, hi. Good evening, mayor, council. Thanks for your time. As far as pass fees, fees have not gone up since 2014. I would say in relation to another golf course in the area, that is a municipal course as Alia City in Mobile, their fees are, for example, $350, $400 per year, per category, higher than ours. What I'm proposing is about it across the board, about a 10% increase per, per category. Works out to be under $2 per week on dues, so.
Okay, any questions for Jeff, council? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the increase and giving the authorization to the director of golf operations to increase at their discretion, no more than 8% every three years.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 24 is a resolution that the date for the Mystic Month's Reverie Annual Parade Event shall be set on the Saturday two weekends prior to Mardi Gras Day, aka Fat Tuesday. Until such time, other actions are taken. The city council approves the parade slash event route. The street closes. The use of the barricades is necessary to provide safety of participants and parade watchers, and the closure of the streets at 2:00 PM until the MMOR parade ends. And all of the city of Fairhope fees associated with this parade event will be in kind as part of the Haven's partnership with the city of Fairhope and will be budgeted through the community development budget in the future. The council, all I'm saying is, rather than it's come back every year until further notice, they'll be allowed to parade on that same date with all the same provisions they've been given. They are subsidized, the Haven is subsidized by the city of Fairhope, and so any amount of money that they can raise directly offsets their dependence on the city. And also by doing so, there are expenses that they would have in, in relation to their parade or event, that means that they would just need more money from the city. So it's no sense in, you know, paying them to pay us back. Also, we probably should put this, and this resolution does this, is put this as a line item, as an in-kind donation in our community development budget in the future. That's the way we do several of these other events in which we waive the fees, and we just, just need to put that in the budget, I think, to take care of that. With that, I will entertain a resolution to allow these.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 25 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope hereby sets the dates for the Fairhope Mardi Gras Organization, authorizes the use of certain city property with the same organizations, Mardi Gras Balls, and authorizes the hiring of city employees to set up and take down tables and chairs in coordination of said organizations leasing of the Civic Center. I'll take this one on as well. We, as most of you know, the city of Fairhope staff is thin in the Civic Center, and in the past for setup and takedown for these balls, they've had the use of jail inmates, and we ended that practice, I don't know, a year or two ago, and there's quite a burden on the, the people, the staff to, to set up and take down. And they also, the staff has concerns for leaving this out in the tents, not out directly in the weather, but there's a lot of humidity and ruining city property. And so this would allow them, since there are three organizations renting the, the Civic Center and all of the accessories that come with that, it would allow them to put this out in the tents and then put it back up, and it wouldn't be such a burden on the staff. So it gives a budget, I think if you see that, of 62 hours, and we would ask for volunteers from the city that want to be paid for this work to, to do that. It also sets the dates for the Mardi Gras Organizations' parades. They had expressed concerns that other organizations, startup organizations potentially would, would try to take those dates before they could have them, and, you know, being that these have been around for decades, I think that it is a token of their, of our appreciation to them to set these dates for a period of 15 years. I can't imagine that we wouldn't allow them to parade on those same dates that they have been for, like I said, many decades. And so it's, it's a token of our appreciation to them. They do pay for the use of the streets and the facilities, and it would just be a goodwill gesture, I believe, on our part to allow them and tell them how much we appreciate them, so that we can continue to attract them to our city and our Civic Center. Any questions? Okay, if not, I will entertain a resolution to set those dates and allow the use of this certain city property.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just as sort of, I guess, kind of in conjunction with that, I noticed we've got a couple of representatives from Point Clear Rotary. They've got a Taste of Rotary event, and I think they had some, some concerns as well. Just wanting to make sure that they have also the ability to lock down that date.
They, they do, and I have, and the reason we, and actually, Mr. Mathews, I told you it would be on tonight's agenda, and I have since talked to Ms. Walker, and she said that all that's going to be rectified, and you have until April. I don't want to put you off, but you have until April, where these others start in, in February. So we wanted to kind of nip these in the bud, and we just, we ran it up against the deadline. And as soon as I saw you out there, I thought, man, I'm going to call you and tell you I didn't get it on, on tonight's agenda. But I can assure you that whatever we afford these other organizations in terms of putting out that furnishings, that what we afford to, one, we will afford to everyone. And so whether if we have to take up that resolution, you know, in fact, if somebody wanted to amend that, we could probably say and afford that to the Point Clear Rotary. I actually have your letter in my notebook, and to afford that same opportunity to the Point Clear Rotary Club on April 21st, 2020. Somebody wanted to amend that resolution, somebody actually first would withdraw their motion. And second, if somebody would withdraw their motion, we could amend that, nip it in the bud now.
Councilmember Boone motioned in round second.
I withdraw, the two of us, I don't know which one she wrote down.
So I would ask for an amended resolution to include Point Clear Rotary Club's event on April 21st, 2020, be afforded the same usage of said tables and chairs that they will have in a, I believe in a tent in the parking lot, if that would be included as well.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second to amend the resolution. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. On the motion of amendment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion is amended, and now on the amended ordinance, I'll entertain a motion, or I'm sorry, on amended resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, amended resolution is approved. Thank you. And thank you, Jessica, for working with us and the staff, and hopefully it'll, it'll give them some relief. Okay, item 26. Not 26 on everybody's heart tonight, though. As a resolution, the city council authorizes Mayor Wilson or council president Burrell on behalf of the city of Fairhope and in coordination with the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation to purchase the property located at the northeast corner of Fairhope Avenue and Section Street, i.e. the Clock Corner in Fairhope, Alabama, for the negotiated purchase price of $525,000, and to authorize the city's half of the purchase come from the municipal capital improvement fund. I believe some council members would like to make some comments. Let's go ahead and get a motion in second on the table if we can, and we'll get to comments. So I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to start, I guess. And I really want to give, before I give my, my thoughts on the property, give a little bit of, of some of the background as to how we got here, because I think that's important. I have, over the course of the last year or so, since we first heard about a project on the corner, have had multiple conversations with Mr. Bowers, the owner, over several aspects of the property in general. At no point in time did I ever negotiate with Mr. Bowers. I think I saw something that said I was authorized to negotiate. I've had multiple conversations with him about the property. Never was I tasked with negotiating anything with him, and, and I never did negotiate anything with him. As there were negotiations about the corner piece, and they mostly involved the idea of the land swap that was first brought up, I think in March of last year, that might be close, and that didn't, that didn't get anywhere. And so in August of last year, Mr. Bowers called me and offered to sell that corner piece to the city for $525,000, and that was a drop-dead price, according to him, in that discussion. I brought that to the city council and the mayor at an executive session, and there simply was not support for that purchase at that price. At that point, we moved forward and we voted on his proposed apartment project, or his proposed hotel project, and it passed, and the city was out of the business at that point in time. If not for some very involved citizens, it might have died at that point. But through some discussions with Mr. Bowers, he expressed a willingness to, to sell that to the city or Single Tax or a group of individuals, whoever really wanted to buy it, because I think over that timeframe, what he's told me is that he understood that that piece of property really belonged to the citizens of Fairhope. And as we sit here today, all we're simply deciding is Single Tax, through their generosity, has, has offered to fund half of Mr. Bowers' purchase price. And so we're simply deciding today not whether we think it's worth $525,000, because that, that's not a gift from Single Tax that can be used for anything else. It's specifically to go towards the purchase of this piece of property. And so what we're deciding right now is, is this worth $262,500 to the city of Fairhope? I personally think it is. And Diane, I haven't really heard the historical background like you broke it down, and I think that is very significant. But to me, the more significant thing is not the historical vantage point of that property, but what it can be used for in the future. And I've heard, as most things in the city of Fairhope, there is not 100% agreement on whether this is a good idea or not. I've heard complaints that it's, it's not historical and that it's never been used for a public purpose. Well, Diane, I think you have articulated very well that there is some historical significance to this piece of property, but the, the argument I would have and have expressed to those who I've discussed it with, that it hasn't been used for a public purpose, at least since my time being here, is that it couldn't be. It's been private property. We couldn't have city sanctioned events on that property. We couldn't place benches on that property. There are a lot of things we couldn't do that we can do if it becomes our property. And so, you know, I think this is one of those things that you look back in 20, 30, 40 years and realize what an opportunity it was, and what a significant thing it is to the city of Fairhope to be able to control that entire piece forever. And I, and because of all those things, I am 100% in favor of doing it.
Thank you. Mr. Conyers, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, Jay said that very well. I would just add that, you know, the purchase price is 525, it's very steep. Thank you to Single Tax for being willing to split that. And again, like Jay added, I look 25 years down the road and say, if Fairhope continues to evolve, if all the buildings are 40 feet tall and three stories, it would be nice to have that one spot in the heart of downtown that's, that's open space and available for citizens' use. So I'm in favor with Single Tax splitting, splitting that cost.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Councilman Bryan?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Robinson, for your opening argument. That was pretty good. However, I appreciate Ms. Thomas's, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Guber, as well as Mr. Stan Kelsey's comments as well. I just believe that the city has a lot more things to spend money on rather than purchasing that property, and that's the reason I'm going to be against it tonight. And I appreciate the Single Tax cooperation as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Boone?
Well, actually, it surprised me that the city didn't own it for 100 years, and then all of a sudden they find out we don't own it. We did try to purchase it several years, 12 or 15 years ago, and this price is what the city will be paying is relatively close to what we wanted to pay 12 or 15 years ago. And as far as public use, I've lived there all my life, and I can assure you, the public spat on that property a long time, and a lot of times concerning parades and different things. So either we were trespassing, or we could consider public use. But I think it's very important for the city to own that piece of property, and I will be approving it.
Thank you, Councilman Boone, and I appreciate everybody's comments and appreciate the generosity of Single Tax Corporation. And, you know, initially, I definitely did not, you know, feel like the city could afford $525,000. Not sure that I was really much in favor of 262.5 either. However, after talking to several citizens and I talked to Councilman Robinson about this as well, and other comments that I've, you know, heard, it, it does seem like, you know, as the resolution says, that we would be preserving this. It says the council's desires to preserve the property of this corner for the preservation enjoyment of all citizens, because I do think that all citizens have been using that corner, whether it's private property or not, as Councilman Boone says. I mean, if you go to any, if you go to Lighting of the Trees, New Year's, any parade that you go to, people are, are gathering there, and they're getting enjoyment out of it. As far as the historical significance goes, we were asked to state that, and I think that Ms. Thomas stated some of the history, but I would encourage anyone to just go down to the Fairhope Museum of History or go through any of the archives, and if you look at many, many of the photos, I mean, a great percentage of the photos, especially taken by Stuart the Picture Man, I sure would like to have a conversation with that man one day, but so many pictures of Fairhope show the water tower that sits at that corner, or shows a view looking north, or a view looking south on Section Street, or a view looking east, or a view looking west, but that corner displays prominently. prominently. And there's actually four parcels there. I mean, this is just the northeast corner, but that's the only thing that we can save right now. The others have been taken by private individuals. So we have an opportunity to buy what I would argue is of great historical significance, and that's why I asked the clerk to put those words in there, that it is of great historical significance, and it is unique in all of the City of Fairhope. It may not be the exact geographical center, but it is, it's the epicenter of the City of Fairhope. It is absolutely at ground zero for the City of Fairhope. And I think that if we look back in 50 years, and there was something there, and, you know, and we voted to approve the hotel, and that wasn't a bad use, but the gentleman decided that he would sell this to us. If we looked back in 50 years, and we had not purchased this property, I think that we would deeply regret it. And so that's why I'm going to support this, although I do have to kind of hold my nose at the price just a little bit and say, you know, in 50 years, we'll think it was a good buy. So with that, I'll close. Counsel comments? Counsel, do you have any other comment?
I have a comment.
Mayor, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
I'd say about a month ago, Counsel asked me to negotiate, and I worked with Hunter on several different scenarios, very creative ways that I think would have been a lot more beneficial for the city and beneficial for what Matt wanted to do possibly as a Plan B. I understand that he's been through a lot, and he's been asked to do a lot of different things, and I didn't want to add to that. But I did have Hunter go talk to Clay, kind of as just a neutral conversations, to go to him with all of this information, emailed Counsel. None of them responded to me, of course. And I just think that we lost out on the opportunity to do something even better. And it's just, it's that continued lack of communication that continues to make it worse for the city. You have to have communication. It's all one-sided, and that would be me communicating with Counsel. It's unfortunate, and I'm not sure why you would add yourself as part of the negotiation, since, Jack, you never even reached out to me to find out the details of what was discussed. So here we are.
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't, you gave us a summary of what you had negotiated. I was not involved with the negotiations whatsoever. I have not talked to the owner of that property in quite some time, but I will ask Counselman Robinson if he will indulge us and maybe shed some more light on your comments. I didn't see the need to, I did read your emails, and I did read your communications. I also don't think it's appropriate for the city to go to an owner of property and tell them what they should do with their property.
These are just suggestions that should happen before this closes. That's it. It would be better for the city, what the city has been doing, we buy property, we do nothing with it. To me, that's a cycle that can't continue. I understand this is a important piece of property, and it has a lot of sentimental value, but really, have we ever used it for its highest purpose? Do we have a plan afterwards except to just have a clock and just an open place where we do nothing with it? I mean, those are the things I like to think about, want to think about the whole picture. And when he mentioned to me what he thought he might do as a Plan B, my suggestions would absolutely, and it's not my suggestions, Hunter worked with me on this and did some research, but, you know, I want to think about his business and what would be good for the city, and I think Clay agreed that he would like to talk to Matt about this, but he wants a unified voice. And I don't ever seem to get a unified voice from Counsel, because I'm always ignored.
Yeah, I don't mind addressing some of those issues, but I want to, you know, do my best to keep what I envision as a very positive thing as positive as I can. You know, the mayor did reach out to me after she had spoken to Mr. Bowers about some of her ideas regarding the use of the corner in connection with what his potential future plans are with the building itself. And I have talked to Matt three times, I think, in the last month or so since the Christmas holidays. And at every point, he was very open and reasonable in these discussions. And what he told me was that while he didn't see the proposal as a bad idea, it simply wasn't something he wanted to get involved with at this point in time.
Didn't give you all the details either.
You didn't give them to me, but I think you gave them to him, and he was expressing...
After we did more research, that's when I said, Hunter, go talk to, you know, and just have a neutral person to talk to him that he's been dealing with, not a politician, because that's the last thing I want to do, is add to a lot of the bureaucracy that we've made him go through on this project.
Sure. And to be fair, though, I did communicate with the mayor that I had had this conversation with Matt in response to her text to explain that Matt had informed me that he simply was not interested in that participation. I wasn't a part of the conversation between you and Mr. Bowers, so I can't fully explain what...
A few texts cannot, that's not a conversation.
And I think I'm agreeing that I wasn't a part of that, so I can't necessarily explain what that was.
But you did reach out to try to find out more, and you said you would.
I think, okay. What Mr. Bowers did explain to me in the course of these conversations was that he is 100% in favor of working with the city on whatever vision or involvement we want to have with the remaining building that sits adjacent to this corner piece of property. He's open to discussion and very eager to be involved to the extent that he can be beneficial to the city in any way. And so I think that's all very positive from a city standpoint moving forward. Ultimately, what I was told today from Mr. Bowers was that he didn't want to hold up and didn't feel it was appropriate to hold up this purchase while he was forced to listen to what the city thought was the best use of his property. And that was, and I don't know any other way to say it than that. But again, I think this is a very positive thing for the city, not only for us, but for my children and hopefully their children. And so I'm very happy to see this as something we can do, and I hope that we have enough support for it to pass tonight.
And I just want to add one more thing because of what you just said. I have not been a part of anything to tell him what he needs to do. This was thinking about Plan B and what he wants to do there, and how this would benefit him too. That part has not been discussed with him, which is why I thought it would be best for Hunter or somebody neutral to discuss it with him. And I said, all I did with y'all, and I emailed every single one of you, was that, you know, if this is something good, then they will present, that we needed to be kind of on the same page. Because he didn't want to come back and say, well, this was an idea, does that have to be approved again?
Yeah, and...
Whatever he told you, he didn't know and still does not know what these things are, because I referred it to Hunter and Clay.
Right. And in an effort to be completely transparent about it, is what I, one of the conversations I had with Mr. Bowers was simply calling him to ask, in reference to the email I think the mayor is discussing, is that, you know, would you like me to try to get this pulled off of the agenda so that you can have the opportunity to hear this presentation and this pitch about what this might be used for?
This is such ridiculous triangulation.
And his answer was simply no.
We continue to lose out on opportunity.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final comments, Counsel?
I don't like how you didn't share that with me either.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Counsel. Item 27 is a request of Randall Wright for the Friends of the Fairhope Public Library permission to hold the Chocolate and Champagne Gala 2020 at the Fairhope Public Library and to serve alcohol on City of Fairhope premises located at 501 Fairhope Avenue on February the 8th, 2020 from 6:30 to 9:00 PM. Chief, is there any reason to deny this request? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant this request. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth for the Council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes. Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, that's an aye from me, too. All right, we adjourn.